So on the agenda tonight, we're going to have a book review. Peter, now Peter was going to do an LT Spice demo, but he sabotaged his own stuff, so you can't do that. Then I guess we're going to have a round table on education topics, video recommendations, we'll have a show and tell. Anybody wants to talk about their, what they're working on? And we have Kevin, Peter and Hassan slated for this. Then we're going to have a round table of questions. If anybody's got any questions and maybe a slight update on the Buildathon. So let's, let's take it away, Mr. Peter. You want to talk about your book reviews?
Yeah, I guess it was going to be aimed at a couple of people who were not, not here tonight. I basically, but, but, but on our theme that we wanted to do this year for, you know, getting back to the basics, I just happened to have a, a book here, uh, you know, Basic Radio from the A double R L. Now it's, it's pretty basic, but there's a few little projects in it and there is, uh, you know, some good, uh, good information. Somebody else has got there too. Who is that? Oh, Eric. Buy stuff and doesn't use it.
Every book there ever was.
It's, it's a good starting point with a lot of different, uh, concepts in here from the, it starts with the simplest, the crystal radio, and then, and then enhancing it on the RF end, the audio end, and the goes on to mixers and heterodines and superheads and et cetera, et cetera. Again, if you're looking for something really heavy, you know, really technical detail, this book may not be for you, but if you want to get back to the basics and have a good review of things, then this is probably, uh, not a bad book to have on your shelf. But again, if you're looking for something that's, uh, down and dirty, really nitty gritty, uh, well, then you might be better off with EMFRD and some other sources. But for basic stuff, I think this is, uh, as an excellent book for your library.
Yeah, I think it's a great book for whoever's starting out, even if they have a license and they're starting out, or if you want to refresh yourself.
I have done that as well. I'm afraid to ask Dave any more questions, so I would refer back to it.
Yeah.
The author of that book, Joel Hallis, he's first class. I don't know if any of you guys have listened to his show he used to put on, right? Doctor is in, right? But, uh, you know, awesome, uh, resource, uh, you know, knows every answer cold, pretty much.
Okay, cool. Okay, uh, does anybody else have, have anything on reading material, books? You want to share or? Let's see, Michael moving off screen, looking for something. Nope. Okay, let's move on.
This just arrived in the mail this evening when I got home. So I don't know if any of you are members, but QRP quarterly finally, so from April.
April.
I'm still waiting for it. QST came yesterday.
I haven't even opened the last four months of QST. I've got some reading to catch up on. Okay, uh, so, uh, Peter was supposed to do an LT, uh, presentation and apparently he's having problems with it, so we got to skip over that.
Yeah, sorry about that. I'll have it maybe ready for the, for next month. A couple of questions cropped up with it that I can't explain and a couple of little things. So I thought, you know, it'd be best to wait until next month.
Okay, okay. So next, uh, item on the agenda, uh, round table, future presentations, topics, who wants to get involved? Actually Frank, you, uh, you picked up the microphones.
Yes, um, finally we have the Peel amateur radio club that has approved the purchase of a couple of microphones for our sessions when we get back together and can have a guest speaker. Uh, one of the biggest problems we had was, uh, that the microphones themselves. So, um, now show and tell. I have a case here. With them all fitted in, so you can just grab and go. And I'll open it up and let's see inside. They're kind of packed in there, cold. Uh, now the lighting's not the best here. So what I'm going to do is take each item out and, uh, we'll have a look at it. First of all, there's a camera that was donated to us by Joe. And, uh, it's, uh, we've used this one before, it works very, very well. Uh, I found a little package for it, uh, but it's kind of small. So if anyone would like to, uh, donate a bottle of Crown Royal to me, um, we, uh, their packaging is very, very nice and just the right size. Uh, the camera is like you said, the one we've had before, uh, Logitech. And with the camera, comes a tripod, also donated by Joe. Now, there are two microphones back in here. Each one has a wind cover or a cover if, uh, you don't want to hear yourself breathe. And, uh, two batteries go in each one. Take this off. And we have the battery compartment. And also there's four batteries packaged in there. Now both of the microphones are operated through a USB dongle. And that's the hardest part to get out of this case. Cause it's sealed, so it doesn't fall out or get damaged. And just a small USB dongle. So this is powered by the computer. The microphones, the two of them, by the way, are powered by the batteries you need. And the whole thing fits perfectly inside the case here. But as I say, I need a light on there. Hang on. Let me try this. There we go. And it's padded on those, those sides. So I am designated custodian of the camera and the microphones. Anybody who, uh, needs them for a presentation can let me know and, uh, we'll, uh, get the package to them. Is there any other questions?
Uh, just one comment. I don't forget, I still have that full sized tripod that was donated to the club.
Okay.
So.
It's a standard fitting on, uh, on the bottom of the camera.
Yeah, yeah.
So, uh, we can mount it anywhere.
Okay. So next time, next time I come by your place, I'll drop it off and you can keep it all together.
Well, I don't think it'll fit in this case is the only problem. But maybe I can keep them together definitely. But, uh, it was a little tricky to get everything going, uh, in one case. There we go. All back together.
Good. So I guess that's all that's left now is to, when we get together is to, uh, set it up, try it out and, uh, make sure everything's working okay.
Right. I do have a computer. Uh, however, um, it doesn't run, uh, open broadcast system because the, uh, chipset needs to be, uh, updated. I had two, uh, different, um, Windows seven machines. And, uh, I was able to update the chipset on one of them. And then ultimately got the blue screen adapter. So that's the one I'm using now, but I'm using it with Linux. Uh, the other one is waiting for somebody who's a little more, uh, conversed with, uh, software than what I am. I'm a hardware man, so, uh, there you go. But the computer is available if, uh, if you need it.
Okay. All righty. Any questions, any comments?
I have a question.
No, go ahead.
I was just curious, uh, if you've tried the camera and then see how, how close or well it will focus, uh, in terms of getting into, uh, looking at parts of PC boards. Is it manual focus or fixed focus?
Uh, basically it's, yeah, it's a fixed focus, uh, focused camera, but it's got a pretty wide, wide range on it. We have used it before in the club meetings. And, uh, maybe next week I'll, uh, I'll use that and we can get an idea of how, how close it'll focus.
Okay. All right. Now is that the same camera, uh, one of the meetings we had, uh, uh, we were trying to show the projector screen on it and it wouldn't focus in on it properly.
That's exactly the same camera, yes.
Okay.
It doesn't have the dynamic range for, uh, uh, showing off of the screen.
Okay. All righty. Any more comments, questions?
If you have, um, if you have a presentation, uh, to show on screen, then it is possible to use the, um, open broadcast, uh, system and plug directly into a, uh, USB port if you want to try it that way. It's something we can play with before the meeting, but, uh, it is possible.
Okay. Yeah, we'll investigate that.
Great.
I'll have the question for you, Ken.
Yeah, just a quick question and, um, can you hear me? There it goes. Okay.
Yep, you're good.
Audio mixer with this or are you going to be using the Windows, uh, sound metal interface? Maybe we need to be looking for an external mixer.
Uh, the only, um, we did use mix, external mixer, uh, in one of the presentations. Uh, the club doesn't own one at this time, but, but we did try that. And, um, the OBS hat, uh, is a mixer within itself that it can support a limited number of inputs from other devices.
Okay.
Okay, no problem. Uh, if we need a mixer, I think I can come up with one, so let me know.
Oh, that's good. We do have an, uh, the club does own an Ethernet mixer, uh, which we can, uh, use to make the other, uh, IP, um, devices. So, uh, that's an option as well.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yeah, it's fine here. I just wondered if, uh, Ken could mute out so we don't have to bird in the background all the time.
That, that?
Uh, yeah, it's okay, but it's odd.
Okay, so, uh, yeah, when, when I'm not talking, I'll, I'll mute my mic.
It's a nice night out there. Maybe the bird wants to be outside, Ken.
Yeah, if I had the choice, believe me. Um, okay, so education wise, we're going to have a round table, um, any, uh, if anybody has any future presentations, they'd like to, uh, contribute to the group. Um, any topics, particular topics, or any basic topics you guys want to talk about? We can handle that if you guys can come up with some suggestions. Go ahead, Pete.
Yeah, I have a suggestion. The F F T function on a scope. That would be a good demonstration to have. I know somebody amongst our, amongst us, uh, has a lot of experience with that because he blew up his spectrum analyzer. So he had no choice but to, uh, figure out how to use the F F T function on a scope and it, and he got pretty good at it. So I thought, well, that was interesting. So I started to try to mess around a little bit with mine, but I could never get to the point that this person was able to. So I guess that I wouldn't mind seeing a demonstration on, on an F F T function on your, on, on the scope. So that's, that's a suggestion for me. And, uh, and maybe what would bode well, although I guess I kind of blew it tonight, uh, is spice demos. You know, like, uh, cause you, any, any kind of a demo that you can use where you're sharing a screen will work out really, really well for these kinds of functions. So, you know, uh, so maybe, uh, some basic circuits with a spice would be a good idea as well.
Sure. Anyone else?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Go ahead. Yes, I, I've been trying to find, buy an oscilloscope, so I'm trying to figure out what I need. And I can't pin anything down, like 200 megahertz or 100, et cetera. So if we could have a talk on what people find useful or what their limitations are of their scopes and what type of things they do with it, that'd be pretty useful. Cause I want to know how other people, what, what they, how they, what they find they need in a scope.
Okay. Okay, um, well, some of us have money and some of us don't. So that's pretty much going to be one factor in what, what you can get. Uh, Peter, Peter and Dave have Siglan, don't you?
Yeah, so I have a hundred megahertz, uh, version and Dave, uh, he splurged an extra 60 bucks and bought the 200 megahertz one. But I think Kevin, you bought a Siglet just the other, not too long ago, right?
I've had one for, um, a year and a half maybe now. I think Michael has one, I have the same one too. I think he has a 200 megahertz one. And, uh, I, I played around with the F F T, I've played around with the, the serial decoding. I mean, there's so many features just on a basic scope like that, I'll never use them all. And, and it's like, you know, it's like you said, you got to sit down and figure out how to use it. Then you got to remember when you really want to be able to use it, can, can you figure it out again? Right? But, uh, no, I was using some of the SPI decoding and it's got all this neat stuff you can do with it. So, but yeah, that, I mean, you could probably do a dozen demonstrations just on all the, the advanced functions in that scope. So anyway, that's Hassan, good luck, because it, it's more like, what do you want to do with it? And then find the scope that, you know, is the minimum cost to get that. But chances are like even one like this, it'll do everything you ever needed to do.
Okay, go ahead, Eric.
Uh, actually Dave has had his hand up for quite a while, so I will defer to, uh, to him.
Go ahead, Dave.
Yeah, I was going to ask, first of all, are we doing the raise your hand thing? And number two, just to comment about the F F T, how would that work in a virtual meeting?
Uh, that's a good point. Uh, maybe we should try sometime offline, uh, to see how a demo would work, to see if it's a worthwhile thing doing. Because it could be a little bit tricky trying to see from what I've seen so far. You'd have to have some pretty good lighting and camera to focus in, I guess.
Exactly. And to zoom in on the functions and show it. So I don't know whether doing a scope tutorial would be conducive to a, uh, virtual, uh, meeting, unless there was a video made ahead of time and you could do that now. Jason, um, Eric, uh, Peter, Eric, uh, is that his right name, Jason Chanko?
That's him.
That's him? Okay. Yeah, he did volunteer to do a, a presentation on, on signal and scopes. And I would think he would have the mechanism for doing that. So if that's something, you know, that's going to be value, we should probably reach out to Jason, because I'm sure Jason's itching to get out and do something. You know, because, uh, probably what he can, um, get out to customers is, uh, is extremely limited.
Okay, maybe what, uh, I don't know what you guys, uh, your feeling is, do we want him to join a group like this? Or do we want to wait until we can actually get back together? And who knows when that'll be?
Why not to a group like this, have him invited in?
Sure. Okay.
And he wanted to, uh, conduct a, a Webex meeting or something like that, so we would all join that.
Yeah, and again, it depends on what, yeah, good point, Peter. It depends on what he can use, because he may have a certain technology, which he could demonstrate some of this stuff on.
Okay. Okay, we've got three with hands up, so I'm going to go with Michael first.
Yeah, Michael, uh, I've been watching, uh, your audio is not coming through.
He's probably muted.
Okay, let's go with, uh, uh, let's go with Eric, please.
Uh, yeah, I just had a brief comment, but I mean, uh, I, I'm not sure how many. It, it looks like maybe half of the people here have scopes, but if we do, um, you know, like having a tutorial, but using your own scope, right? Uh, um, and for those that don't or have, you know, different ones, I guess, uh, you know, that the quality on the screen would be what it is. But, um, I, I'd be, uh, interested in just, you know, having mine running beside and, you know, learning some of the functions, uh, with it that way. So, uh, that's what I would suggest.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Um, you know, if we do get, hook up with, uh, Jason and, uh, come down with a, a set of basics on a scope and then try them out on your own. Who was next? I think it was Brian.
Yeah, I guess I, I pretty much reiterate what Todd, Dave was saying. Um, I have seen a number of videos that, uh, because Alan W two A E W has done on various things and he works for Tektronix. And, you know, he's done demonstrations with his scopes, including that video that was just suggested earlier today, I think. So if, if this guy from, what is it, Siglan, um, you know, could basically do a video, maybe a video beforehand they could present, um, going through, um, you know, the, the basic concepts, the very sort of low level stuff that sort of everybody could find on any scope they got. I mean, I've got my old analog, uh, Tektronix here that I bought at Hamfast. But basically there you go, you know, how to, uh, what is it? Yeah. Adjusting the probes, so you zero out the capacitance, whatever it is, that sort of thing. You know, it's the entry level stuff. I'm not getting too high in the F F T with all due respect to, uh, to Peter. Um, there's always, I guess, time for a level two kind of thing or whatever. Um, but, um, you know, I guess what sort of inform Hassan for what he is interested in doing, not only what to get a scope, but what features that he wants to invest in. A hundred megahertz may be fine or 200 if you need it for something else, but that would be good. Um, I mean, it's in real time is probably okay too. It just requires, you know, manipulation of the camera and stuff that may just make things more complex. So if, if he wants to prepackage, that's his choice. If he wants to go free form, that's fine too. But that's, that's what I'd be interested in and think might work okay.
Okay. Hey, uh, Frank, what make of scope do you have? What's the D S O you have?
I'll be perfectly honest, I completely forgotten.
Yeah, I've got one too, but I can't remember the make. Hassan, there is a line of, um, less expensive, uh, uh, storage scopes. And, uh, like the one I have, I can't remember the, the name of it. But it, it also has the F F T function in. And I think it's like $400 Canadian. Now, if you don't want to spend a big bundle in the beginning, yeah, that's a Regal, Regal, yeah, that's the one. Um, I think they're, the beginner's scopes are like $400 Canadian. And, uh, I think they're good to a hundred. I think they're good to a hundred megahertz. They're not the highest quality you get from a Siglan, but it's a beginner scope. And, uh, I have one that was, um, uh, hacked for, I think it was 60 megahertz and then somehow they came up with some hack to, um, bring it up to 100. So 100, I don't know if I'd ever have it used for 100, but that might be something to look at. And, uh, I've read a lot of reviews, I've talked to quite a few people that use them. Hans uses one and, uh, they're happy with it.
Kevin just reminded me, uh, that mine is actually a Regal one of the. So it's a, it's a copy, but it serves my purpose.
Yeah, and it works well. It works well for what you want. Any, uh, go ahead, Peter.
Yeah, a couple of comments. Yeah, I think Jason was probably going to do something, an overall, uh, general, uh, introduction to scopes, that kind of thing, and the capabilities of the, of their product line and whatnot and what have you, the basics. I, when I was suggesting the F F T function, I was getting, prilling down to something a little bit more specific and something, uh, obviously it's a little bit more advanced and probably would be quite useful to, uh, people who do not have a spectrum analyzer. And, and there's a few Q thing, uh, things that you can do with an F F T that'll help you out, uh, in that regard. Um, in regards to the 100 megahertz and 200 megahertz scope, I mean, Dave and I had a good argument back at the, uh, the rat hole over that one. But I, I, I will admit, if I had to do it all over again, I probably would have coughed up a little bit extra money to go for the 200 megahertz scope. The difference, uh, between the two is not huge. Although I guess I could, uh, hack into the, uh, into mine and, and upgrade it to that way, but I have not done that. But, um, but anyway, that's my two cents worth, uh, Ken.
Okay, well, maybe, uh, maybe, uh, we should get a hold of a Jason there and maybe try and schedule something in. Do you want to look after it, Dave, or you want me to get a hold of him?
Yeah, if you, if you want to get, get a hold of him, that's fine. Um, Hassan, what's your budget? That's the first, when you're looking at a scope, the first thing you got to ask yourself is, how much do you want to spend?
So that's the tricky part. So I, I already had a scope, it's an analog electronics, four channel, 350 megahertz. I bought it for like three or four, 300 bucks. It was amazing, but then it, it sort of died. So it's in pieces on my workbench. I have to repair the power supply unit and that's a project in and of itself. But I don't want to go buy another $400 scope. I, I figure I should go one step up now. I mean, I've already got the beginner scope. And I don't want to limit myself too much, so I'm willing to spend up to, I don't know, 800 bucks US, thousand.
At that price, Hassan, you can get a really nice scope. Take a look at the, uh, the Siglens, they have upper end scopes that'll do digital decode for you. So it actually has a bus, uh, come out for, for, for digital bus. It'll, I can't remember all, all the functions, but they do have an upper end scope. It's, I think it's around six or 800 dollars. And, uh, it's got all the bells and whistles. And you could also get yourself a, a four, four channel. The other thing is what, what's the purpose for this? Is this for a radio or is it for general electronics or?
That's the tricky part. So I don't know, it's for everything. Radio, power electronics, maybe a bit of digital. I just, I just don't want to limit myself and just say, you know, damn it, I should have spent 100 bucks more and gotten this feature.
Right. And so you know, as, as well as I do bandwidth, it's going to be a limiting factor, right? So you want to get yourself, uh, especially if you're going to be doing other signals, you know, other, uh, types of signals, you're going to be looking at square waves or sawtooth or stuff like that, that's got, you know, harmonic content. You're going to want to go with a higher bandwidth scope. So probably in a neighborhood of, you know, I would say at least 250 megahertz, because with mine, 250 megahertz is great. But when I'm looking at like a 50 megahertz square wave or 100 megahertz square wave, it's no longer a square wave.
Well, that could be the probes. You need a 50 ohms input sometimes or an active probe to see it. But, but in general, that was the one, the one thing I wanted to bring up because sure, for digital signals, you definitely need a fast scope. But for radio, if you down convert the signal, your scope only needs to be as big as the band of interest. So even a 50 megahertz scope can digitize like the entire ham band. So if we use a direct conversion receiver up to a gigahertz, take any band of interest down to 50, like 25 megahertz IF, you can use the cheapest scope to do work at any frequency in that range.
Yeah, as long as your, your, um, oscillator frequency doesn't fold back into the core band, right? And then you also have to do some, some pretty rigorous filtering, because if you've got, like, if you, let, let just say you got a, a 200 megahertz scope and you're using a, a, I don't know. and you're using a, a, I don't know, a three hundred megahertz oscillator, it's still gonna show up. The scope is still gonna, gonna pick it up, right? Because it's, it's within, it's gonna be attenuated. But the scope, it's still gonna be there. It'll fold back, right?
So use, in that case, a cheap scope is better because it'll actually attenuate.
Yeah. You gotta make, make sure you do some pretty high-end filtering. And if you take a look at um, what Farhan did with his uh, I think it's called Spectran. His scope, I think Dwayne is also working on a spectrum analyzer. So Dwayne, Dwayne could probably talk about the filtering you need, but um, you know, you're gonna need some, some pretty good filtering to, to reduce the, the unwanted mixing content, right?
But that's a nice trade-off to have. You get a cheap scope, then you build your own filters, and then you can go anywhere up to a gigahertz or so for radio work only.
Hey guys, can I break in here for a sec?
Go ahead.
I'm just gonna share something uh, with you. Uh, bear with me a second here. Uh, can everybody see that?
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, so this is a site that Sigulent runs and uh, it's their clearance section. So you know, they're a bump and scratch um, section. And you know, you might want to bookmark this and keep an eye out for it because they have some pretty good uh, scopes, some pretty good deals here, right? Two hundred and thirty-four bucks US gets you a uh, fifty meg scope. I guess they got two of them uh, on offer here, um, two channel. Uh, they have a couple hundred meg scopes, four channel, uh, four twenty-five, four seventy, um, two hundred meg scope uh, down here, uh, that's two channel. So you know, some of those things might be of interest to you. Uh, I bought a seventy meg uh, Sigulent about three years ago or so and uh, uh, you know, been pretty happy with it. Uh, it wasn't uh, from their clearance, but uh, bought it at Hamvention, twenty seventeen, I think it was. Um, so anyway, just something to keep in mind, uh, if you're looking to not blow the budget, especially if you want to lower uh, uh, lower bandwidth scope here, you know, two hundred odd bucks US, even with the exchange, uh, still keeps it uh, pretty reasonable, I think. So. Anyway, just wanted to share that with you. Sigulent clearance.
And I also um, contacted Jason before I bought my SA. I had Jason uh, monitoring the clearance stuff for me, and I told him, I said, if you got this type of spectrum analyzer with this bandwidth, with this features that ever came in, you know, put it aside, it's, it's for me. So you know, Jason's pretty good that way. You could even try and earmark a, um, a, a specific product.
Yeah, some of those prices, the clearance prices are pretty good. I didn't think they'd be that low.
The US dollars, actually.
Yeah, but still, they're, they're quite low. Anybody else want to contribute?
I got a general question. Or is everyone having um, their video, the video thumbnails pop in and out?
Solid on my end. What do you mean by that, Dave?
Like the video, um, sometimes your video feed pops out, P like everyone, their video feed just pops out and it just shows a blank, a block screen.
I've seen that.
It might be just a bandwidth issue at my end, but I'm showing my uh, actually, I'm showing quite a bit of packet loss. I'm, I'm showing nine percent packet loss. So I wonder if it's maybe your internet connection, my internet connection that's causing that.
I haven't seen a single person wink out yet.
The only time it changed for me is when Eric put up the uh, slide there uh, for Siglet. And uh, when it went back, it was full screen rather than the individual uh, the views of everyone. Just a click cleared it up.
Yeah, and keep in mind, in my house, I got my son at home and my wife, and they're both using the internet. My son is streaming games and uh, my wife is probably watching Netflix. So bandwidth is a premium around here.
I'd really like to see the uh, Siglent stuff reviewed because I've got the uh, hundred megahertz scope like Peter, I guess, and uh, I sort of know how to use it, but not really. Anybody hear me?
Yep, yep.
Oh, good, it's back. Okay.
Get some more projects going there, Michael, and you'll learn to use the scope real quick.
One of the things that uh, I've got the scope and I've got the manual and I guess one of my comments would be is the manuals sort of written partly in Chinese still, which makes it very difficult sometimes to really get an idea of what they're talking about. So demos would be really good if we can figure out a way to do a demo. The other thing while I've got an opportunity here is um, I did a presentation for the Mrs. Saga Club years ago on filters, just the basic stuff out of the A R L handbook. I sort of went through it. Is that of any interest?
Everything's of interest.
Well, okay, I've got that and I can, I can do that for whatever it's worth at some point. Okay, maybe we can uh, uh, slate it in for one of the uh, shorter meetings that we have, or we can save it for next month's uh, H B meeting. Whatever suits you. Doesn't matter to me. Okay, yeah, just post it up on the forum. Okay. But I like, I, coming back to the scope, I really li- I like the scope. I, in a way, I wish I bought the two hundred megahertz scope, but at the time I didn't know, but it, it works for me. I can, I can see what I want to see and just trying to, still trying to learn how to use it. Yeah, well, I've got one of these cheaper. Actually, my Regal scope is uh, obsolete. Uh, but it still works for me. It does a good job and I'm happy for it with it. And I paid, I bought it used for two fifty. Everything in. Okay, um, what else do we have here?
Dwayne has his hand up.
Okay, go ahead, Dwayne. I didn't see the uh, hand come up here.
All right, uh, one thing, uh, if you want to use a, a alternative for a scope for uh, steer for just digital work, uh, working Arduino's and stuff like that, for about ten dollars, you can get a little, little uh, uh, logic analyzer and has some free software that'll do, you know, S P I, I squared C and a bunch of other encoding. I got uh, linked to one of my projects on the uh, on my blog. So there's something else, I'll, I'll, I'll post something on the group about uh, what it is and uh, uh, where it's available in the software.
Okay, appreciate it, Dwayne. Anyone else? Okay, moving on. Um, okay, so we got uh, some uh, projects going on. Uh, Kevin, uh, Kevin, actually Kevin and Peter are uh, working on SigGen upgrades. I think the two of them are going in, in a fork. I think Peter's working on it, built-in attenuators. So um, let's go with Kevin first.
Okay, um, so anyway, I know last, was it the last month, I think? I um, you know, we, we made a little bit of uh, change to the software where we added uh, support for these attenuator boards and I'm just gonna show. So anyway, I've got the hardware hooked up now and and Peter's working on, you know, being able to display the, the power as well. So um, I'm just gonna share this. So this, this is what I did. Can you see that?
Yep.
Okay, so I had, I put two boards together because we have the I and Q outputs on the SigGen. So I thought, okay, well, let's put two together. I can do two channels, or if I really want, I can put them in series and then double the uh, double the reduction if I want, right? So that's kind of what I started with. I haven't mounted, of course, the the hard part of mechanically mounting everything hasn't been done yet. So it's kind of, this is what I was doing to um, to test it. I don't know if you can, is that clear for everybody? So I was just using the X G three to generate a signal just because I can change it and I can do whatever, um, set the levels and then I was setting the attenuation through the uh, SigGen and then reading the power with our S N A. And I just, because I wanted to characterize it, right? I wanted to see what it was uh, what it was like as far as uh, how repeatable it was and inaccurate. Whoops, hang on. And that's just a couple of close-ups there of just, and I, it needed the three point three volt power supply. Peter, you were asking where I put it. I put it on the back of this little board that I plugged into the uh, in, into the SigGen. So that, that's where my, that's where my power supply is hiding and I, unfortunately, I didn't release any smoke. However, it is good to know. Um, you said you released some smoke when, because you put it on the back of the SigGen. I inadvertently hooked up the power supply to that P E forty-three O two board. I hooked it up backwards. So it had like, you know, plus on the minus, minus on the plus. It survived, no smoke. So I was, I was reasonably uh, pleased with that. But so anyway, with that setup, I did do some um, hang on here, I gotta just change applications here. Um, two, 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 oh, wrong one. I want to share that screen. Yes. So I'm just gonna go over. So I did a, I did a little chart here, just going through, and I did like eighty meters and six meters. So the blue is the eighty meters, orange is the six meters, and then I just stepped it, you know, one, one dB, two dB, four dB, eight dB and sixteen dB. And uh, you can see from when I first uh, just with, without anything, the S N A, so just completely bypassed, it's not in the circuit. The, the power is, you know, about one and a half dB different between eighty meters and six meters. Whether that's the X G three or the S N A, I don't know, but that's the difference that's there. So that was pretty consistent. Um, at a zero dBm power level. So I was putting in zero dBm and the S N A was reliably and repeatedly reading, you know, a one and a half dB difference and approximately the settings that I dialed in. So um, it was a little more accurate on six meters, eighty meters was, you know, off by a dB or two. So anyway, that was, that was that part. And then I thought, well, what happens at a lower power level? And it was even, it was a more interesting curve because something happens here around eight dB. I don't know what's going on and I know, Dave, you were always talking about what's the cross talk in these chips and whether this is part of that, I have no idea, but it was just a bit of an anomaly, right? It's, it's always good to know your test equipment, but like here, so eight dB, there's a, there's a three decibel difference between uh, just in frequencies, going from uh, six meters to eighty meters. So anyway, that was a couple of little interesting things I found about the chip, you know, the, the boards. There were, you know, eBay boards for a few bucks, whatever. Um, so anyway, that's uh, that, that's what I've done so far, but I haven't uh, haven't mechanically mounted it, but it all seems to be working. So and now we're just waiting on uh, Peter's addition for the uh, power reading. I don't know if there's any questions or, or whatever, anyway.
Okay, quickly, just uh, briefly, uh, tell, tell everybody what you're working on, like exactly what you're working on. It's the SigGen with the ta- built-in attenuators?
Yes, um, here, I'll put up a picture again. Um, no, I want an entire screen without screen, hang on. Get the right screen here. So what I've done is this part. So we've got the SigGen. Whoops, oh crap. Close the wrong window. So I've got the signal, the signal generator. And what I want to do is um, I'm gonna take this attenuator here and just with a couple of cables, it's, you know, it's gonna be kind of clutched together, but a couple of cables, so I can take and put a signal channel through it. And then set an attenuation level to get a, the correct drive level that I want for like, say, the DC receiver or any other mixer. Um, or you can do two channels. You can take the I and Q output and you can put one channel through each uh, attenuator and they're just, they're wired in parallel, so they're just gonna be at the same attenuation level. Um, or if you really want more attenuation, you can wire them in series and then it doubles, obviously. So that, that's, that's what I'm working on. So that the uh, the addition, additional software just sends control signals out through this expansion, these expansion pins that we built into the SigGen. So that's controlling the forty-three O two chip in a parallel mode.
So you bought the, you bought the two little boards, then?
That's correct. Just uh, those two, these two boards here, the, that P, P E forty-three O two, it's an obsolete chip, I believe, but I mean, they're all over eBay.
Any comments, anybody? Okay, let's uh, let's switch over to Peter then. Okay, hang on one sec. Uh, Dave wants to say something. Go ahead, Dave.
Yeah, um, Kevin, one of the things I was gonna ask and you kind of mentioned it was the uh, power levels you were using. Because the other thing to keep in mind is that I don't know what the sensitivity of uh, the measuring device uh, you're measuring, but with the SigGen, it's, I believe the um, uh, I squared C bus is always active because it's always talking uh, to the, and I can't remember if it's always talking to the L C D. So there could be a, you know, uh, hundreds of kilohertz of signal feeding into the um, attenuation model, and that's fairly strong. Could that be bleeding through? But you would see that, you would see that more on a lower power level, right? When you were doing it minus thirty-three, you would see that more at that level, right? But you tried it at zero dBm and you're seeing a greater variation at zero and you were seeing better at minus thirty-three, correct?
Actually, it was just the opposite. Zero dBm was pretty much what I expected, but minus thirty-three, there was that non-linearity there. Um, here, I can bring it up again for a second if you want. Let me just switch over here. There we go. So this is minus thirty-three. Right? So you can see that the curve actually crosses over, right? And if, but at zero, there's a very consistent one and a half dB difference, which is what the, the S N, or no, sorry, the S, yeah, the S N A actually was measuring in what I call bypass. So the attenuator board wasn't even in the circuit.
Which S N A?
The one we built, the Park S N A.
Okay.
So I was using that to measure the signal level and it shows a one and a half dB difference, which, which is very consistent on when I'm outputting zero dBm or putting a zero dBm power level into the attenuator. When I switched down to minus thirty-three and only, I only use that because that's what was available on the X G three is the next level down. Um, then the difference varied anywhere from, you know, minus point nine to like, it's at plus point five. So um, and, and the biggest difference was almost three dB there at uh, at the eight dB setting. So and I did it a couple of times, just to make sure I wasn't, you know, measuring something wrong or whatever. So anyway, but there's no I two C bus on the uh, on the power attenuator board. So I don't, I'm not sure I understand what you're.
How do you, how do you talk to the uh, power attenuator, the attenuator board? How do you set the attenuation?
Just four, four, five, five uh, digital lines. That's it. The digital outputs.
Oh, okay. So it's not a.
No, it's not an I two C version.
I thought it was a nice uh, I squared C.
No, it's not.
Okay.
Really, really ba- really basic, very simple, nothing fancy.
Okay, so it's like a, it's a binary, what's it called? B C D? It's kind of binary coded.
That's exactly what it is. Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Very straightforward.
Yeah, that's odd. That's very, very odd because I would expect it to be opposite. I'd expect it to have better performance at a lower power level and at zero dBm, you'd be getting uh, stuff bleed, bleeding through. Could it, that couldn't be something with the X, X G three, could it?
Um, no, I don't believe so. Uh, because I did, I did check the X G three and the S N A just on their own, without any attenuator, and the signals were what I expected.
Okay.
So.
And you're sure it's not the uh, uh, the S N A? And you're sure it's not the uh uh the SNA that's that's doing that?
Well, it was it was consistent. This nonlinearity wasn't there when I went to different power levels even and I have a fixed attenuator too, like a couple of fixed attenuators. I have six, 20, 40, and uh and that also came out as expected, so the discrepancy is in the 4302 chips.
Okay, okay, got it.
Maybe it has something to do with me putting the power supply on backwards. That's possible, I don't know, but otherwise it seems to work, so anyway.
Okay, so so you did rule out all of those, all those, all those uh other variables?
Yep. So anyway, just for what it's worth, you know. They're always good to characterize your test equipment.
Okay, go ahead, Hassan.
Yeah, I was gonna say, try to put a scope on the VCC and ground rails of your chip and it should be a pure DC signal. If there's any RF bleeding through, that could be a sign that something's wrong inside the chip.
Okay, yeah, I'll do that next time I uh power it up. Maybe I should take the scope and put an FFT on it and and it could see exactly what frequency is bleeding through.
Okay, anybody else uh for uh Kevin? Okay, go ahead, Dwayne.
Yeah, my uh attenuator that I built with a pair of those in series, I did a couple of sweeps with my uh nano VNA at uh like 10 dB increments uh down to about about total of 60 dB attenuation, up to about 250 megahertz, and everything I see is pretty linear within about a dB, dB and a half over the entire range. I think I got some shots up on my blog and one of the blog entries.
And yours were uh eBay boards as well?
Yes, same ones.
Okay, ma- maybe Kevin, you got a bad batch.
Yeah, it's also po- it's always possible, right? And like I said, I did put the power supplies on backwards for a second, so that who knows if that did anything, but um I mean, generally, they're sort of working, but you know, not not as good as what uh Dwayne had, you obviously had on his equipment, so.
Yeah, Dwayne, maybe you can uh possibly find out who the seller was that you bought off of and uh post it to the group and if anybody wants to buy boards, possibly get it from him.
All the boards look the same. I bought a couple of boards from several different vendors and they pretty much look all identical.
Yeah, okay. Anybody else for uh Kevin? Let's move on to Peter. Go ahead, Pete.
Okay, uh just a couple of comments uh before I show off mine. Um. I do notice when I got down to, well, I think lower than I don't have the data in front of me, unfortunately, otherwise I could speak specifically, but I did notice, I think I was checking at seven megahertz only. I didn't uh try a couple of different frequencies like uh Kevin did. But I did notice when I was starting to get down quite low, I'm I'm thinking minus 50 in around there, maybe maybe even more, and I can't recall for sure. Uh, things started to go a little bit askew there, and if I recall, and this will make Dave feel better, uh I I agree with you, Kevin, around zero dB or the higher power levels and a little bit less that it was bang on. Uh, but when you went much higher, and I can't remember what the level was, things seemed to drift off a little bit there as well. But anyway, uh get the RF measuring circuit and software part portion to work, it becomes a mute point because the whole idea is if as you're doing the different attenuating levels, if you can measure the power outlet output, well, then you know what you're doing, right? So anyway. I was uh originally doing the testing and whatnot on the bench with all the different boards spread all over the place, nowhere near as neat as what Kevin was just showing. I think he cleaned his up a little bit for the pictures myself. And it was, you know, cables everywhere and connections breaking here and there, and I got fed up and I decided to put it in a box, so I I resalvaged the repurposed the power supply case and uh put it in the in the in here. So I got the three outputs going here, the the two switches and the LCD. I had it all powered up today. It seemed to be working, and then I realized I forgot to wire up the switches, otherwise I would show the screen. So here's inside the case and here's the uh 8307 board. That was one of the original boards I did when we were doing the uh testing for I forget which project it is. Now, I guess uh, oh, maybe it was the SNA, was it the SNA? Anyway, whatever. And then there's always the SigGen board over here on this side. And uh that's the LCD screen and then there's the board that uh uh my screen's freezing up. Anyway, they got a board here and that's the one that Dwayne gave me. So I repurposed that into here and uh I don't think you can really see it that well. Oh, it's on the other side. And uh Kevin alluded to letting some smoke out, and yes, I did let some smoke out today on a I forgot that I needed the 3.3 volts on the on Dwayne's board. And since we are now going through the nano on the SigGen, I didn't have that on the uh on the attenuator board, so I had to uh had a an AMS uh 3.3 regulator chip. And it actually fit right perfect on the pins on the uh on where the nano on the attenuator board went. So I thought, oh, okay, I'll repurpose those pins there and and it just happened to be a ground tab sitting right there as well. I thought, oh, good, I can solder that tab right to that and everything's all nice and mechanically, electrically sound. Uh, the only thing is I forgot that the tab on that chip is uh is power out, is V out as well. So there we go. I hadn't let the smoke out for a while, but uh uh I did the I did this time, so I'm not sure what degree uh belt I am with letting the smoke out, but I'm sure it's double degree. And I think that's uh pretty much it. I'm just about ready just to put a couple more little touches on it and then uh wire up the two switches and then I'll get back to the software side of things for the RF sensing. And uh and then I'll have to strip it all back out again and paint the case up. Oh, and one other thing, I don't know why I can't do it. But I call it, I've added character to my uh unit. I've misdrilled these holes, so they're not quite lined up and there's just no way to correct that, so my project has character. That's how I'm I'm gonna call it. Anyway, that's
Bigger hole.
Pardon me?
Drill a bigger hole.
No, I need washers. Anyway, that's it for me, Ken, on that one. You're muted, Ken.
How about now?
Here you now.
Ah, there we go. It switches backwards. Any comments, questions for Peter? No, okay. Um.
I'm admiring.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, he's got a really nice workspace there. It's pretty pretty neatly neatly kept. I mean yeah, Peter, what's what's your secret? What do you like? How do you do that? How do you keep it so neat?
You gotta be kidding. De-focus the camera a little bit and you don't see all this.
It's a background image. Okay, uh, we also Hassan, you had something showing tile?
Yeah, I'll be quick. Just tell me how to share my screen.
If you look uh bottom left corner, there's uh three icons there. I think it's the first one.
Okay. All right, can you guys see this?
Nope, it's a blank, a gray screen. Have you picked your application that you want to share?
Yeah, I did.
Hmm, oh, nope, nope.
Oh, let's try this. How about now?
There we go. That's it.
Okay. So I'll get straight to it. So this isn't, so my thought was if we combine the the direct conversion receiver with an FPGA, we can do something interesting with it. So this is an FPGA SOC that Altera sells. It's 130 US dollars. It's basically like a Raspberry Pi with an FPGA attached inside. And it's got and the FPGA is basically like a advanced DSP. Um, it's got an ADC with 500 kilo samples per second, which is means you can use it for about 100, 250 kilohertz frequency, which is not enough to build an AMSDR radio. So here's my thought. We use the direct the direct conversion receiver as a down converter. So what this means is it'll you tune it to like, you can take any band and just mix it down to like zero megahertz. And then what you do is you use the FPGAs, you digitize that 250 kilohertz band at zero, the base band, and use software DSP techniques in the FPGA. And so you can basically, what you do is you use the direct conversion receiver to select the band. And you tune the channel using software techniques and you can use like high order filters, you know, as as much as you want, just limited by the precision of the arithmetic and the the number of DSPs in this thing. You know, you can do PLLs and any kind of advanced demodulation or even something exotic like neural network noise cancellation. Like I mentioned last time, a friend of mine said that Nvidia has a has a demo where they can actually you know, they can actually filter out dog sounds and washing machines and stuff inside of a video conference. So the same thing could work for RF. I mean, you could filter out all kinds of noise using a neural network. But it could be built with basically just this and then interfacing this to the direct conversion receiver.
Okay, well, you know what you should do? You should buy one and try it out.
I've got one and I I will try it out. I didn't plan to do that.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, maybe see if you can get something together for the next uh next month's uh meeting.
Yep, I'll take a look. And there was one more thing, a Buildathon project, but I guess should I go into it now or later?
No, no, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, this is another idea called bandpass sampling. So if you with this, you you don't even need the direct conversion receiver. Here's how it works. This is your signal at some high frequency, like let's say, I don't know, a couple of megahertz, it's it's an IF signal. You set the sampling frequency of your ADC to just below that. Or actually any uh any of these lines here, and then you can so as long as you filter your si- your your signal, your RF signal, so that it's it's a bandpass signal. In other words, everything's filtered out outside of a narrow band. You can then digitize at whatever your ADC rate is. And then the the aliasing will actually shift this down to to base band. So in other words, I can have like I can have like a seven megahertz signal or something. If I digitize it at if my ADC is the 200 kilohertz, well, actually, that doesn't work. Um, I need a 600 kilohertz thing. But if I digitize at 600 kilohertz, it'll actually see the zero to 300 megahertz band down at 600. So you can actually, basically what this means is you can choose an ADC based on the width of your band and not the RF frequency. So the the key is there's a there's a there's a spec parameter called the analog input bandwidth and all good ADCs have that listed. So the 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 analog bandwidth of your ADC has to be high enough, which means there should be no capacitances or anything in the input in the input pins. And the sampling frequency should be twice the bandwidth you're trying to get. And so you just directly sample it and it down converts it for you. And so with this technique, you could basically just put a good bandpass filter in front of your Arduino or your FPGA or anything and as long as you tune you tune the band by tuning your filter. And so you could have your your handband up at a couple of megahertz and you're sampling at a couple of kilohertz and you you basically get the entire band. And the ADC will see it without mixing it or down converting it.
And that's with the same board?
That's with that's with any ADC which has a an input bandwidth high enough.
Oh, okay, okay.
So otherwise, the ADC will just kind of attenuate the signal. But yeah, like so this this is one thing I've always wanted to try out, but this is this would kind of, this would mean you could actually just interface. I mean, if you can build a good set of bandpass filters or a tunable set, then you could basically have an SDR with no external parts except the filters, which is pretty pretty interesting, because I mean, you wouldn't have to, you wouldn't have to kind of design that thing to be with all the the front ends and everything.
Go ahead, Dave.
Hey, Hassan, a couple of questions. Uh, I think your second question, your second uh band sample uh discussion answered my first question. If you go back to that F FPGA specs.
Yeah.
Okay, it says it's 500 kilo samples per second. So if you're sampling um in your example, you're bringing it down to 10 megahertz and you're sampling at 500 kilo samples forgetting the band pass sampling, that wouldn't work.
You're right.
The only way that would work is with band um band, what's it called, band?
With, but you you need a different ADC, like we could digitize this band with that board. We need a higher, we'd actually have to build a higher, we'd have to put a better ADC on this chip.
Okay, so then my next question is in order for this to, I can kind of visualize this, I can see because you're not sampling it in sequence, like if you look at Nyquist, you're sampling it at the same frequency that it's in exactly the same place as as the frequencies coming in, right? But with this, you're randomly sampling it, so you're gonna be only sampling certain parts of the wave. So wouldn't you have to integrate this over time to get the actual wave coming out?
Yeah, that's something I I sometimes think about, but it turns, I have to do the math. I I I the it's like intuition tells me there's something being lost. I don't know what it is.
And I think it's time, I think I think you have to trade to make this work, because I have an old, the reason I'm saying that, I have an old digital oscilloscope and it's it's a very small, it's it's really shitty and it's got a um the sample rate is much smaller than the bandwidth. And they claim it's 250 or 100 100 megahertz, but if you look at the sample rate, it's only at 10 or 20 megahertz. And the way they explain it in the manual is exactly what you're saying, is that they're sampling as long as the wave that you're trying to monitor is doesn't have any jitter. It's a it's it's locked in, it's a it's a good wave. And you're sampling it at periodic places, you can reconstruct it over a time and you could see the scope. When I'm measuring a a high frequency signal, you could see the scope needs to settle. It takes it some time and all of a sudden, it's like it's like it takes it some time to focus in on on the signal.
Right, so if the scope, if the signal is a clean sine wave, it has a bandwidth of zero. So technically, you only need two data points to reconstruct the signal.
Yeah, but that's 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 Nyquist. That's at the um at twice the frequency, right? But if you're now at half the frequency, you're not sampling at at it's different points you're sampling it at, right?
Yes, that's right. So yeah, I think about this a lot. I I I don't know if I've actually resolved it.
Yeah, let's not digress here, but what I could do is I could show you the manual of how they talk about that and there's got a they've got a term for it. Or not, um, it's under sampling. There's a term they have for it, but I could show you the manual and how they explain it, and that might clarify.
It it's called bandpass sampling or undersampling, right? Either of those two. I mean, it it does work. They do use this technique. I've so it's a it's a real thing. Um, I maybe there's a noise trade off. I don't know, but I've always wanted to try it and see if it works.
Yeah, I'll I'll share that manual of God with you and you could see how that scope uh does it.
Yeah, that'd be awesome.
And that's what this is all about, Hassan. Try it and see, get an idea, try it out and see if it works.
Yes, that's right. Yeah. I think that's the that that's the easiest way to resolve this, which is part of the reason, one of the reasons I need a scope. I mean, I I need a crutch in case something doesn't go right and I don't want to be stuck.
Dave has one that's not in use. It's in a box somewhere.
Mm hmm. Well, we'll come over, Dave, and we can do try this together. Mm-hmm. Well, maybe I'll come over, Dave, and we can do, try this together.
At a distance.
Yeah, oh no, I got, I got some good Corona, but with line.
Brood in 19, right? Okay, any questions, comments for Hassan? We got, uh, less than 10 minutes left here. Let's see. Uh, no progress on the DCR yet. I just finished building the, uh, my SigGen that I got whenever we had the Buildathon. I was having problems with calibration. Peter, remember I was saying I was having problems with calibration? Yeah, it turned out I was looking at the wrong display on my scope for the frequency. And I got it to work. No, no, no. Started together, plugged it in, and it worked first time. No smoke. Um, I am still going to, I want to try out the SigGen on the DCR. I'm curious to see how it, uh, how well it'll operate. Um, I also have to find out. I calculated a attenuator to go from the, uh, SigGen to the SA612. And the 612 requires between 200 and 300, uh, millivolts peak to peak. So I have to look at what, uh, the output from the SigGen is. May have to go a little higher, cause I think Frank said he had measured his at 500, uh, millivolts peak to peak. Is that right, Frank?
Yeah, that was about it, uh, around, around 500. It was still working fine. It was higher than the spec, but, uh, I didn't have any problems with it. So I didn't go any further, uh, in that direction at all.
Okay, good. Yeah, so I'm going to try that next. I want to work out exactly what the attenuation has to be. And then once that's, I got that working, I want to, um, uh, I want to try that LTC, uh, LTC 6900 digital oscillator chip that I talked about before. And, uh, I just got to figure out where to get a adapter board for it, or I'm going to make my own. I don't know how I'm going to do it yet. And, uh, I was reading the specs on it again, and it's very, very, very easy to use. It's going to replace a lot of parts with the analog, uh, VFO. And that's it with the DCR so far. Comments, questions?
Well, I, I know I hooked up the SigGen to, uh, the DCR that, that I built, and it worked great. And, uh, and I, and I did a little bit of testing with the, uh, power level going into the 612. I just can't remember, um, what the numbers are now, but all I can say is that it was wide ranging. You know, it went down quite low and quite high, and it worked quite well. And so, uh, it's pretty flexible in that regard. Matter of fact, I think I didn't even, uh, put an attenuator at, at the first go around. And I think Dave, when he heard that, he was surprised that I didn't blow the chip. But, uh, I did blow the audio chip, mind you, but, uh, I didn't blow the, uh, 612. God, there's another let the smoke out thing. Holy cow. I've been talking about it so much now, I'm starting to forget.
Okay, go ahead, Kevin.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I, I measured the output from the SigGen. It's about 10 dB, 10 dBm, sorry, plus 10 dBm. So it's just above what you're looking for anyway. So it's pretty close.
Okay, okay. Uh, anybody else? Okay, moving on. I think we got a couple, just a couple more things here. Um, that's a DCR. Oh, I think, was it, was it you, Peter, or the, uh, the CW?
Well, there was a mention earlier. Dave was mentioning something about that. I surprised her that CW and Dave were in the same, same sentence. But, uh, I thought it was a good other thing to, to, to mention, uh, who's capable or of CW and who's learning and who would like to learn and who would like to practice on air. And I just threw, uh, maybe 60 meters, uh, because I've noticed that, uh, at least on the FOF2 reports these days, uh, it is getting up a little bit, uh, higher and, uh, than, uh, before. So the, the, the MUF is getting up a little bit better. So 60 meters, and you know, when we did our Nevis Ontario stuff, uh, we were able to work between Kingston and Toronto. And, uh, so maybe it might be worthwhile trying that out again, uh, some, at some point.
Yeah, okay. Sounds good. Um, yeah, I've been thinking about, I'm actually waiting for, um, Hans, uh, QCX Plus to come out, cause I'm going to order one. And I may even buy the, uh, the 50 watt app as well.
Well, it's out now.
I looked at, uh, when it was posted the other day, I went on the site and it was not on, uh, it wasn't available yet.
Mid-June.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. You're correct. Anyways, uh, let's see here. I think we're pretty much done.
Ken, Duane has his hand up.
I don't even see the, uh, the hand up come up. Okay, go ahead. Go ahead, Duane.
Uh, I didn't have it up there, uh, but, uh, I've got a project that I just started working on since all the parts I ordered from my other ones haven't, uh, come in yet. So I'm up doing my, uh, VFO, VFO combination into a display that looks something like that. And it's amazing what you can do when you've got a dual core, 240 meg processor that you can go and have applica, you can have things running on two cores.
That is cool stuff. Would you mind, would you mind, uh, grabbing a picture and posting it on our website, our forum?
I just uploaded something on my blog. It's got there and it's got a, a, a video of the, uh, uh, person who, the Japanese guy, Han, that, uh, basically did most of the software right now. I'm trying to modify it and, uh, get it to work, uh, the way I want it to.
Okay, that's cool. I'll, I'll check out your blog. Anybody else for anything at all?
I just brought, uh, it's funny, you must've just put up there, cause I looked at it just yesterday and it wasn't there, but I see it now. That's a cool looking display.
Anybody else? Well, that was a good night. That was a good night. Uh, uh, you guys enjoy the session tonight?
Absolutely.
Good, good, good.
Yeah, I thought it was good.
Good. Uh, Al, go ahead, Al.
No, I was just trying to wave and say, yes, I enjoyed the session, the part that I saw anyway. Um, I now have a brand new laptop, so the performance is fantastic. It's an eight gigabyte Intel i7, so everything is clear. And all my griping about Jitsi, uh, is in the past.
Good stuff, good stuff. Okay, guys, uh, it was a good session tonight. And, uh, if you need any info or suggestions about tonight's session, uh, about any of the, uh, items we talked about, put it up on the forum. And, uh, I'm sure someone will reply, get you any answers you're looking for. Okay, guys, uh, go ahead, Pete.
Yeah, well, we, I know there's a brief, uh, flurry of emails about password in this meeting. Do we want to go that, or do you want to talk about that over the next, uh, little while? Cause there, you know, we're not going to have the, I mean, we'll have the, uh, our every other week kind of sessions coming up, the hour long sessions, not next week, but I think that the week after is the next one scheduled. But for the, the third Wednesday of the month, uh, meeting, are we wanting to password that, or do we want to talk about that more?
Okay, from what I understand, I was reading this afternoon, uh, the only way you can use, uh, the web version of Jitsi and use a password is you, uh, you set it up in a shared link that you post on the forum.
Okay, or do we just continue like this until, uh, and that, and as long as there's no, no trouble, then why bother?
Yeah.
If you, uh, click on the little icon on the lower right-hand side of your screen, the, the lowercase i, uh, it's between, uh, you know, the have the three dots and the, um, uh, tile you toggle. Um, that's where you set the password. So I think Dave uh, mentioned earlier that, uh, you know, the first person to do that basically sets a password for anyone else to join in. So for instance, I just changed the password to P A R C in lowercase. Uh, so I think anyone that wants to join now would have to enter that password to join. I'm not sure. Um, but, uh, yeah, I mean, it's probably not a bad idea to be a little proactive in this. Uh, you know, I think Jitsi is probably a, uh, you know, like Linux, a, a lower, uh, attractant for, you know, people that are trying to cause havoc, but, uh, still it's a possibility. I mean, I noticed that we've had somebody join in our meeting here who is unidentified. I don't know if that's just a residual connection from one of us, but, uh, there's somebody who's only identified as fellow Jitster, um, who I sent a message to and never got a response, but, uh, it's a tile on my screen here, uh, um, that, you know, has no caller name on it. So, so, yeah, you know, might be something to think about.
Maybe. Well, at least what I would suggest, at least change the meeting ID. Don't keep using the same meeting ID every meeting. Change it.
Yeah, that's, that's a good idea. The only problem is if anybody, uh, if anybody's planning to bomb the Jitsi sessions and they happen to be on the forum, they're going to get all the information anyways.
So, well, then it doesn't matter. So, but I'm saying if you change the meeting ID, right? It's only people on the forum that's, that's going to get it. So if every week you, ahead of time, you say it's, it's going to be Park HB1 or Park HB10 or, you know, whatever, and you publish that ahead of time, everyone should be able to get that. And yes, anyone on the forum can come in and bomb our meetings. Same thing with the password. You publish a password, everyone has it. Whoever gets it on the forum can go and, and bomb the, the, uh, meeting.
Yeah, yeah. Now we've got, I see somebody's hand up, but there's no name to it. Uh, the name is Fellow Jitzer. And they got their hand up. Want to go ahead?
Yeah, the name is Bob, uh, and the call is November Zulu to Zulu. And, um, I worked Field Day with you guys a number of years ago. And, uh, you all even gave me a hat and I'm appreciative of that. And Duane, who is in my, um, North Georgia QRP Club, told me about this group. And I said, well, you know, I've been up there and I've met some of you guys. And, uh, I'm interested in building and learning. So, um, I've been tracking this down. And finally I've caught up with you. So thank you very much. And I'll find out, put my name and call and picture in here, so you all will know who I am. Thanks a lot.
No problem, Bob. We were expecting you earlier. And, uh, I did announce that you would possibly be joining in.
Yeah, welcome to the group, uh, Bob. Um, your camera is turned off. Unfortunately, we can't see you, but maybe, uh, next time. There we go. Okay. Welcome, and I hope you enjoy the session.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it muchly.
Yeah, Bob, I remember you from Field Day, uh, last year or the year before. I can't remember which, but, uh, yeah.
It's been like around three or four years.
Oh, wow, okay, time flies.
Okay, so.
Thank you very much, guys. I'm learning, I'm learning a lot.
Excellent, excellent. Well.
And I appreciate it. And I'll be back again.
Good.
Bob, are you part of our, are you a member of our forum?
Might you repeat that, Ken?
Bob, are you a member of our forum?
Bob's talking. I think he's muted.
Uh, you might be muted, uh, Bob.
I think he's just having mic problems. There's, uh, no mute icon.
Uh, no. Right, I've been sending emails to you.
No, I think you're just having a bad connection, Bob.
Bob, I'll email you some info.
Okay. Okay, thanks a million. I'm, uh, maybe that hasn't been better. Still can't hear me?
No, there you are. You're in and out.
Your cell phone has a bad connection, Bob, I think.
Okay, Bob, uh, if you can hear me or not, um, you can join our forum. Uh, that's where we'll announce our, uh, Wednesday, uh, monthly main meeting. And we'll have, uh, shorter sessions, uh, prior and after that. And they'll be announced up on our, our, uh, our forum. And it'll give you, uh, the room name that you can jump in with Jitsi.
Uh, this Friday morning, I'm going to be, uh, going for a hike with a, uh, a bit of a curmudgeonly guy who's got some, uh, computer security, uh, background. And, uh, I will, uh, see if we can figure out some way of, you know, maybe sharing a password. I think the password makes sense. Uh, I know he's going to insist on just changing the room name every time, but, you know, it's got a password function. Why not?
Okay, thanks a lot. Much.
So, anyway, uh, we'll see if we can sort something out for the next, uh, meeting in, uh, two weeks, right? Uh, I think it is, uh, June the 3rd.
Have we got July the, July the 1st? No, whatever. I don't know. I don't know where I am. June 3rd.
No, two weeks, two weeks we'll have another, but that's the hour long session.
Do we have a controller for that one?
No, I keep waiting for Dave to volunteer, but it looks like he's not. So if worse comes to worse, I'll take it.
Okay. Okay, I think we're done for the night, guys. No, this is, uh, this is great. Um, any last, uh, last words? I think we have.
Just thanks for organizing it. Really good.
Excellent, guys. Okay, good. Well, good night, everybody. And we'll see you in what, two weeks?
And Peter, just, just in closing, you know, uh, someone else could take a run at this, at hosting this. We have a lot of people here and, uh, doesn't have, have to be the same people week after week.
No, that's true. Though if anybody wants to, uh, take a stab at, uh, running the control, uh, a moderator, controller, whatever you want to call it, uh, just, just let me know. Anyone, anyone? Dave, anyone? Bueller, Bueller, Bueller?
Okay, if you, if you're interested in helping out with controlling the, uh, the sessions, just post it up on the forum.
Yeah, cause I think, you know, going, going forward, uh, I think even when we do get back to the, I don't think we'll be doing the in-person meetings for, for, for quite a while yet. But even when we do get back to the in-person meetings, I think we should still carry, I still like to carry on with the, uh, with the hour long sessions online. But that, Chris, we can talk about that later.
Yeah. Okay, good. All right, guys. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Ken, for, uh, chairing the meeting and, uh, very good evening, Keith. And good evening to all.
Okay, thank you, guys. Have a good night.